Evening.
Jerry, would you power them?
Here.
Chris Lewis?
Here.
Milo Sweet?
Here.
Susan Goyet?
Here.
Carol Reed?
Here.
Harry Woodson?
Here.
And Michael Smith?
Here.
Madam, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I call the meeting to order. This is Monday, October 26, 2020. I would entertain a motion to reconvene the planning commission meeting of Monday, October 19, 2020.
I move that we reconvene the planning meeting that we postponed last Monday.
I'll second.
Jerry made a motion to reconvene the planning commission meeting of Monday, October 19, and Chris seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Just to clarify, this case number is Z 2020-03. LNP Properties LLC, owner of property located north of 85th Street North and west of Interstate I-135. Request approval of zoning change to Light Industrial District for the development of a truck stop or a travel center. The project includes a main travel center, fueling stations, truck servicing facility, a car wash, and overnight truck parking. At this point, the committee will consider the 17 findings of fact. These findings were set aside by the Supreme Court for the use of planning commissions over the state of Kansas to help them decide all the zoning cases using factual information, using factual information and not relying on innuendos and favoritism and emotions. So, I will read the 17 findings of fact. This is something I don't like to do because it's pretty detailed, but this is what we need to, you all up here, we will hear nothing from the audience. And, number one. What are the existing uses, their character, and condition of the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? And the staff has prepared answers for these 17 questions. The subject property is currently used for agricultural purposes with no other improvements. The Saddle Brook neighborhood is located approximately 200 feet northwest of the application area, and the Bear Hill Estates neighborhood is northeast of the subject property across I-135 highway. Property to the east across the interstate is a large undeveloped commercial site currently in agriculture production with a small cemetery site and the water tower. The land south across 85th Street North is particularly, is partially developed with an outdoor RV sales lot and an aerospace testing facility for the National Institute for Aviation Research is located to the southeast of the plot we're looking at. Do you understand this? If there are any questions for my commission on number one? No question? All right. Number two. What is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? The answer. The subject property as well as adjoining land is currently zoned C-2 service business district. The Saddle Brook neighborhood and the Bear Hill Estates neighborhood are both zoned R-2 single-family residential district. Property to the east across the interstate is zoned C-2 with a cemetery site zoned A-1 agriculture district. The land south across 85th Street North is zoned C-2, and the National Institute for Aviation Research property is zoned G-C, general commercial district.
Madam Chair, may I make one small correction? It was brought to my attention last week that Bear Hill Estates is not zoned R-2, it is zoned R-1.
Let's change that then. And we'll change that for the record. So Saddle Brook is R-2?
Saddle Brook is R-2, Bear Hill Estates is R-1.
All right. That's one change. Are there any questions from my commission? Everybody got it? Okay. Number three. Is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration? The answer. The application area has been in continuous agricultural production while waiting for commercial development interest. Based on the relatively slow rate of growth in this area of the city, staff does not consider this a significant factor in its review of the request. Questions from my commission? If you have any questions, this is the time we change it, like we just did with this zoning regulation, or this zoning change. Okay, that's number three. Number four. Would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations? And the answer is no. All right. Number five. Is the request caused by changing, excuse me, let me start again. Is the request caused by changed or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such changed or changing conditions? And the answer is, it is staff's opinion that there is no significant change in the land use pattern of the immediate area that would necessitate a change of zoning classification. Undeveloped land in the vicinity of the 85th Street North and I-135 interchange is one of the city's more, mower undeveloped area, or underdeveloped area, and the subject property is a logical location for this type of land use. Question? Anybody?
These are findings of facts? Findings of fact?
These are findings of fact, and this is...
Well, they're stating opinion, then. Shouldn't it be reworded?
Okay.
Opinion and a fact can be two different things.
It is the staff's opinion.
We have opinions all day long.
The staff? All right. Let's ask that. That would be a professional opinion. But would that, that's not just my, I mean, I wouldn't know, but that's a professional opinion from planners. You think that would not be a fact?
Well, I don't know, they use the word opinion.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking for clarification. I can give an opinion, but we're wanting facts.
Well, Russ, would you like to reword it?
No, I wouldn't like to reword it. I'm comfortable with it as stated. However, if Commissioner Smith or anyone else wants to rewrite any of those, as you have mentioned, that's certainly a possibility. One can make an argument that all of these are opinions at some level, so there again, that's my recommendation. That's certainly malleable to the will of this commission after public testimony and information submitted during last week's start of the public hearing, and certainly malleable at the next level at City Council. So, again, these are things that, if you want, could be considered a starting point for discussion, a default set of findings that I have put together that is certainly, can certainly be edited.
Okay.
You want to change it, Michael? What would you change it to?
Not for now. We'll just go with the assumption that it's a fact.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
We'll just go with the assumption that it's a fact.
All right. I'm going to say from a professional, if I went to a doctor and he said, "My opinion is..." I would consider that a fact.
You might get a second opinion, too. A second fact.
True.
Hey, Russ, besides you, who else is defined as staff? I think I know who it is, but I want to make sure I've got it right.
Staff, you want to know it's staff? As far as I...
Certain, oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to catch you off.
I was just going to say, as far as I know, staff is the zoning administrator, the...
City engineer.
City engineer, okay. City manager, assistant city manager, and city attorney. I could be wrong on that.
Certainly, that's Public Works. If we have a situation like we did earlier this year with property along North Broadway where it was impacting certain transportation or traffic improvements, actually, all of the zoning cases that we've had this year have some sort of potential impact on traffic. So, we involve the city engineer as well as Public Works Director on those types of discussions. Obviously, cases such as this, and not necessarily contentious cases, require the overview and the input from Mr. Moser, city attorney. So, from that standpoint, oftentimes, something that I can, that comes to my mind early in my tenure here last year, I had discussions with the city administrator over the zoning regulations and how they are currently written and what some of the strengths are of our existing regulations and what, more specifically, are some of the weaknesses. And so, understanding that the city administrator wants to see a heightened set of standards for commercial development, those are things that although we haven't made text changes as such to those provisions of the zoning regulations, with the allowance of a protective overlay district in conjunction with the zoning case such as we have here, we're able to then make kind of policy decisions for each individual zoning case. Ultimately, and I think this is probably the second or third time I've told the commission this, we will ultimately be seeing text amendments that strengthen, in my opinion, landscape and screening requirements, and perhaps even some architectural type of requirements for certain commercial districts. And so, when I hear, whether it's an elected official or city administration or citizens, quite frankly, talk about certain aspects of development that they would like to see, I try to incorporate as necessary or as warranted or as the opportunity presents themselves to implement some of those things. We don't have great screening and landscaping requirements, so we saw just a little bit of that in the previous zoning case later this, in the latter part of the summer, and you will see those reflected in my protective overlay where we talk about architectural standards, where we talk about site plan submission for review, where we talk about screening. So, I guess from that standpoint, city administration as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Did you want to change anything?
No.
All right. That was five. Okay. Number six. Do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? The answer. The subject property has access to 85th Street, which is a four-lane asphalt mat road with adequate capacity to carry traffic generated by this project. Any additional traffic improvements will be considered during the plating process. Sanitary sewer and water infrastructure is available to serve the application area. Any questions? This one? Nobody? Okay. That was six. Number seven. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted or in lieu of dedications made for right-of-way easements, access control, or building setback lines? The answer is yes. The applicant, applicants filed a preliminary plat to reconfigure the existing commercial portion of Saddle Brook Second Edition, which was approved earlier this year. Pending the outcome of this application, the applicant will be required to modify the plat to reflect a new layout that subsequently complies with the development restrictions of the recommended protective overlay. Questions? Anybody? Comments? Okay. Okay. Number eight. Would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property? Yes, the answer is yes. The staff's opinion, the request, in staff's opinion, the request creates a need for additional screening to mitigate any potential impact to the residential development to the Northwest. Refer to the protective overlay in the staff recommendation for specific screening requirements. And we will discuss the protective overlay when we finish the 17 findings of fact. Any questions from the commission? All right. Number nine. Is suitable vacant land or buildings available or not available for development and that currently has the same zoning as is requested? The answer. While the review of a zone change request should not rest on whether there are alternative sites available for purchase, it is staff's opinion there is a lack of undeveloped land, undeveloped land in this, of this size, which combines close proximity to adequate transportation facilities, that is, major arterial road and an interstate highway, and municipal utility services with the required zoning and surrounding land uses to suit the proposed project. Questions? Anybody? Nothing? Number 10. If the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? The answer is, there is a need for a variety of local served commercial and industrial uses in the city, and this request would help serve the needs of the local warehousing and distribution sectors. Also, the development of this type of use could help foster additional development on surrounding parcels. Questions? Comment? Number 11. Is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? The answer is yes. The site remains viable for the uses permitted by the C-2 district. Questions?
Should there be any mention at all for the I-1 in that?
What did you say, Jerry?
Should there be any mention of the change of, of use in that?
Is the subject property suitable to the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Yes, and the answer would be yes, it is suitable to C-2 because it is... They said with a current... Go ahead, Russ.
I didn't mean to stick my foot in there, but to answer to your question, Jerry, this question typically gets to the, to the idea that is it a spurious request for a zone change or is there something significant? Let's say, a good example would be an old farmstead of, say, five to 10 acres, and the balance of that quarter section was sold off for development, and we have some commercial, and we have some office, and we have some residential development, but we always had that old home place, the old farmstead, that remains zoned probably at the most residential district, either A-1 ag or R-1 residential. And so, the question is, is that property still viable as a residential use on 10 acres when you're surrounded maybe by office and commercial development? That would, that would lend credence to the idea that maybe a zone change is better supported because the property is going to have a hard time going forward as zoned. So, the argument here is that the applicant, in my opinion, isn't requesting the I-1 industrial zoning because, because he cannot do anything with the C-2. This property, if this request were denied, he would still have viable, a viable reason to believe that that property, this 18 acres in the subject property, would still be viable for C-2 uses.
Okay, that answers my question.
Good, thank you.
I'm satisfied.
Thank you. That was 11, all right. Number 12. To what extent would the removal of the restrictions, that is, the approval of the zoning request determined... Boy. To what extent would the removal of the restrictions, i.e. the remove... Oh, boy. That's why I don't like to read these. To what extent would the removal of the restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? And the answer. With the approval of a protective overlay in association with the zone change request, staff is of the opinion the development of a truck stop/travel center would be compatible with surrounding land uses. With the recommended elimination of all other industrial uses allowed in the I-1 district, the impact of a zone change to the I-1 district is lessened. Apart from overnight truck parking, all other aspects of this project would be permitted by right as currently zoned, and that was the C-2. Further, the inclusion of restrictions on signage, lighting, and the location of overnight truck parking orients the more impactful aspects of the proposed project away from Saddle Brook neighborhood. Finally, the revised layout of the proposed Saddle Brook Commercial Park Edition will create a physical barrier between the residential development and the truck stop/travel center by plating a 90-foot wide reserve and a 70-foot wide roadway between the project and the neighborhood.
Well, as on there, apart from overnight truck parking, the other aspects would work not as it's zoned now, you couldn't have a truck stop, you can only have a service station. KK or...
Certainly, I would, I would contend that a travel center truck stops only relevant difference from a convenience store is the overnight parking.
Right.
Well, in I-1, it's called service stations, including truck stop and travel centers. In C-2, it only says service stations.
That's correct.
It was cleared up and, or it was more detailed and gave more leeway or provided more options in I, in Industrial 1.
That's correct.
So, as it's zoned now, you can't have a, you can only have a service station, not a truck stop or a service center.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
Yes, there are a lot of things you can have under C-2, but a service station is one.
But not a truck stop.
But not a truck stop. They can come in and fill and leave trucks. You know, if you had diesel, you could service them, but they would not be able to stay overnight.
But you couldn't have a truck stop or a service center because it's differentiated in commercial and industrial. In commercial, it only says service stations. In industrial, it says service stations and service centers and truck stops.
But it's because of the overnight parking that puts it in a different category and bumps it up to necessity of having I-1 zoning.
I guess the question may, may be stated, what is the difference between a service station and a service station including truck stop/travel center? And the only differentiation I can come up with is the overnight, the number of overnight truck parking. So, if there was a Dylan's Grocery Store, for example, or a Walmart neighbor, a Walmart store, there would be the ability, and oftentimes is the case, that you would have maybe a one or two, three late-night deliveries on semi-tractor trailers that would idle until employees arrived in order to unload the truck. That's often a complaint we see in grocery stores, for example, or that type of retail store. So, I guess the thought put behind that, as far as I'm concerned, or me writing this, this response to that, is, you know, this travel center is a small campus of various number of uses. I think there is a car wash, there's a quick lube center, so we have some vehicle repair type of service. We obviously, some travel centers have overnight accommodations like a hotel or motel. Some have restaurants as part of them. Some of them, nearly all of them, the defining feature would be some sort of mini-mart or convenience store type of thing for food and beverages while refueling, in addition to refueling. So, all of those things are permitted by right in the C-2, so why would we need a zoning zone change? The reason is because this planning commission, the city council, and your consultant who wrote the zoning regulations thought that that is a separate use category and should be treated different than any other Casey's, any other convenience store, any other hotel, motel, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, the point being is what we're, we're not dealing with introducing a whole host of industrial uses, we're only introducing one. And the question then becomes, at least to, in my opinion, as to whether that, what level or how significant is that change? How significant is that impact? And are there ways in which we can mitigate that impact? And so, those questions are all answered, at least from my point of view, in the staff comments, but I appreciate the question. It is, it is curious. There are communities that do not differentiate. We'll point out that this is all irrelevant, but there are communities that do not differentiate in Sedgwick County, and there are certainly communities in Sedgwick County, including ours, that do differentiate, and that's not an oversight. I don't also think that that's a no-relevant question, but then again, it's the question, at least the central question, to be reviewed in light of all the other mitigating circumstances, so.
I always thought service stations went away when somebody didn't come out and fill up the gas tank and check your windshield wipers.
Zoning codes are often...
For service stations.
Zoning codes are oftenly inherited, inherently outdated when it comes to the list of uses. It's one of the more frustrating things, not only for people like me, but also for the general public and developers coming into town, is, you know, how well do you identify individual uses and how well do you define those individual uses to give guidance for either potential developers coming into town or for people having to enforce the code on existing development? So, yeah, sometimes I've seen, Goddard had a zoning regu, set of zoning regulations that had taxi cab stands as a listed use, and I'm not sure how many taxi cab services are in Goddard, Kansas historically, but that was back when they were a city of 900, so that's the good and the bad of the zoning regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Anybody have anything else? Anybody else? All right, thank you. Number 13. Would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of those regulations? The answer is yes. As stated, the intent of the protective overlay is to, number one, ensure compatibility among incompatible or potentially incompatible land uses. Number two, ease the transition from one zoning district to another. Number three, address sites or land uses with special requirements. And number four, guide the development of unusual situations or unique circumstances. You have questions? Anyone? All right. Number 14. Is the request in conformance with comprehensive, the comprehensive plan? And does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? And the answer is yes. The proposed development at this location will further the plan's goal to continue to expand the industrial potential of Broadway and I-135 interstate to improve the appearance of the area and remove the blighted influence of incompatible mixtures of commercial, industrial, and residential uses. And the economic goals of attracting more retail and service businesses and attracting commercial, industrial, and residential development in order to strengthen the economy and tax base. The plan also seeks to protect residential developments from the impact of incompatible uses, which staff has considered in the recommended conditions of approval. Last, the comprehensive plan's future use map identifies this area as appropriate for commercial uses, and the proposed project generally conforms with that designation. Questions?
How can it conform with that designation if you're having to change it?
Say it again.
The last sentence, the proposed project generally conforms to that designation, which is commercial, or apparently not, or we wouldn't be changing it to industrial.
Russ?
Certainly, so obviously 14. And land use decisions are always predicated on, the comprehensive plan or should be in part based on the comprehensive plan. And I know that the residents of the area furthered great arguments as to their reading of the comprehensive plan, clearly as most of these. And I will say this, again, to go back, findings of fact is perhaps wording that is ill advised. There's no, our zoning code doesn't call them findings of fact, they're just called findings and criteria, review criteria, to answer a previous question that you had Commissioner Smith. So again, as we've stated before, these are by and large primarily, even though I say staff, they are primarily mine, my opinions, based on input as I see necessary to create the staff report. And again, as the previous criteria alluded to, in many ways, we designate it as an industrial use in our zoning regulations. National industrial codes classify this as a retail commercial type of use. The land-based classification system that county appraisers in the state uses to form the tax basis for property tax purposes, codes this type of use as a commercial retail use. So in looking at it from all angles, one can make the argument that a truck stop, based on these other criterias, with the sole exception being our zoning regulations, is generally a commercial type of endeavor. They are not producing anything onsite, they're not bringing in raw materials and transforming those materials into something, there's no manufacturing going on, it's not a warehouse distribution center, which would also be a hallmark of heavy truck traffic as other uses here in our industrial base. So again, my statements, my findings, and would be more than happy to work with the commission on altering those opinions, if you will, in the staff summary as warranted. And that would certainly be something that the commission and the city council could ultimately decide was issued, my opinion was issued in error in regards to that. And that's the way this process operates. So that's the verification, that's the validation that I'm going to provide on my answer to that.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Anything else, Michael? Okay. Number 15. What is the support or opposition to the request? There has, the answer, there has been substantial opposition to the request from area residents in the Saddle Brook and Bear Hill Estates subdivisions. Staff will provide a copy of correspondence in a separate attachment. And we have copies, you all have copies of correspondence, and we heard from the residents during the public portion of the hearing. Any questions on that one? Number 16. Are there any informational materials or recommendations available from professional persons knowledgeable on this request, which would be helpful in its evaluation? And the answer is, staff recommends approval of the requested zone change subject to the provisions of a protective overlay. There is need for a variety of local served land use, uses in the city, and development within the non-residential portion of Saddle Brook Second Edition could foster additional development in the future. Anything? Anybody? And 17. By comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare of not approving the request outweigh the loss in value of the hardship, or the hardship imposed upon the applicant? In staff's opinion, it does not. The request simply does not differ significantly from what is currently permitted on the site. In fact, the recommendate, recommended conditions of approval may provide greater protection to the residential neighborhood than would otherwise exist without the protective overlay. Do you have any questions?
I wonder about public health, if you got 100 diesel trucks running, and they have to be down for 10 hours for rest, that's a lot of fumes coming out at one time overnight.
I don't have an interest in this company, but I would imagine that's why they have them back up to the interstate, the trucks, but I don't know.
I don't think the location, depends on, I don't think the wind cares where the trucks parked.
True.
Okay, it's just a question with respect to the public health.
Like I, like I said, I had no idea what they were going to do until we finally got that small.
Picture.
Site plan and.
And we still don't have blueprints.
No, we don't.
No.
Not yet. Well, other than that plant, that small picture they gave us.
Yeah, drawing.
Did you want to question this or change it or?
No, unless there's somebody has more information as to the effect of the fumes of 100 trucks idling for 10 hours at night. Any kind of study done?
Russ, can you address that?
Did you get any information?
No, but the applicant's agent is here and could probably better address those types of concerns, being familiar with that industry.
All right. Yes, please. Michael has a question. This one.
Live, right? There we go.
Yeah, it's on.
So Commissioner Smith referenced 100 diesel trucks idling all night. Our mitigation, some of our mitigation for both sound as well as air quality include electrifying at least 25% of the parking spots, which eliminate any idling in those spots. Also auxiliary power units are equipped on many of these trucks, and we intend to enforce the Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Air Act, which limits the amount of idling trucks are permitted to do. They can't idle all night. A couple other things we're doing is surrounding, surrounding the actual parking area with fenced, a fenced area, which doesn't do a lot, anything for that air quality, but it does, we plan to have vegetation around it, which is a very well recognized as mitigation efforts next to highways, for example. Walls with dense vegetation to disrupt the flow of any possible fumes, as well as the the land earth screening we plan to have in place that will also have that same, that same dense vegetation on it to disrupt any, any flow of, of air or fumes in that area.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does that answer your question, Michael? Any more comments, questions on this, the 17? Okay, I've read the 17 findings. I would accept a. And entertain a motion to, either accept or reject them. We need, we need to vote on this first before we do anything else.
Ma'am Chair, I'll make the motion that we accept the 17 findings of fact as stated.
I'll second.
And Harry? Thank you.
With the staff recommendations?
Chris made a motion, that was Harry, right?
Yes.
Chris made a motion to accept the 17 findings of fact as written, and Harry seconded.
There was a motion made by Chris to accept the findings of fact, the 17 findings of fact as written, and Harry Woodson seconded the motion.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I say aye also. Thank you, motion carries. Now, now we come to the protective overlay. The staff recommends approval of their request for zoning, subject to the following conditions of a protective overlay. And there are several. I will read, there are a lot, I will read them. Number one, permitted uses. The subject property shall be limited, limited to those uses permitted by right in the C2 service business district, in addition to service stations, including truck stops and travel centers as permitted in the I-1 light industrial district. I'm going to stop every once in a while. If there's something you want to ask me, or ask Russ, then please speak up, okay? Number two, signage. Signs shall be permitted in accordance with the City of Park City zoning regulations, Article 7, except as noted before, below. A, no advertising signs or billboards or other off-site signs shall be permitted within the subject property. B, illuminated wall signage shall be prohibited on the north and west facades of all buildings within the proposed Lot 2, Block A, Saddle Brook Commercial Park Edition, except for directional signs denoting parking spaces and circulation within the property. That was to be. To C is flashing, rotating, or moving signs, signs with moving lights, or signs which create illusions of movement, such as LED, LED signs are not permitted. To D, each lot may be permitted one ground sign for each street frontage. Ground signs may be spaced a minimum of 150 feet apart and a minimum of 30 feet from all property lines, irrespective of how. What is that word? Russ? How and is leased, what is that? What should it be?
It should read, all property lines irrespective of how land is leased or sold.
Land, how land is leased or sold, all right. All right. Number two, E. Signs along 85th Street North shall have a maximum area of 150 square feet. Signs along I-135 shall have a maximum area of 300 square feet. Signs along the proposed Hartman Drive shall have a maximum area of 75 square feet. To F, the sign within the subject property along 85th Street North shall be monument style and limited to a height of 20 feet. Signs within the subject property along the proposed Hartman Drive shall be monument style and limited to a height of 10 feet. Signs within the subject property along I-135 shall be limited to a height of 80 feet. All signage shall, shall share similar elements in design. All right, that was number two, signage. Number three, building setback lines shall be 35 feet along, along 85th Street North and I-135 Highway and the proposed Hartman Drive. All other building setback lines shall be per the City of Park City zoning regulations for the C2 service business district. If one or more lots are developed as part of a single project, internal setback shall not be required. Number four, the location of the principal building of the truck stop slash travel center shall be restricted to proposed Lot 1, Block A, Saddle Brook Commercial Park Edition. All fuel pump stations shall be prohibited within 500 feet of the residential development to the northwest of the subject property. Number five, no overhead doors shall be allowed within 200 feet of residential use, uses, and shall not face the residential development to the northwest of the subject property. Exterior audio systems that project sound beyond the boundaries of the subject property are prohibited. Number six, all buildings shall be limited to 35 feet in height. Number seven, parking. Off-street parking shall be provided in accordance with the Park City zoning regulations. All overnight truck parking shall be prohibited within 500 feet of the residential development to the northwest of the subject property. All off-street parking areas and driveways shall be paved with asphalt, asphaltic concrete or concrete. Number eight, lighting. All exterior lighting sources shall employ cutoff luminaries to minimize light trespass and glare, and shall be shielded to direct light dispersment in a downward direction. The site shall share similar or consistent parking lot light, lighting elements, that is fixtures, poles, and lamps, et cetera, and shall limit the height of light poles to 20 feet, including the base, within 200 feet of a budding residential zoned property, and 28 feet, including the base, on the remainder of the tract. Number nine is screening and landscaping. 9A, a landscape plan prepared by a landscape architect for the required plantings, including the type, location, and specification of plant materials, shall be submitted to the zoning administrator for review and approval prior to the issuance of building permits. A financial guarantee for the required plantings shall be required prior to the issuance of any occupancy permit if said plantings have not been installed. Number nine, B. Landscape buffer of a minimum Oh, I'm sorry.
9A. Instead of just being reviewed by the one zoning administrator, wouldn't it be nice if the HOA could review it also?
So we're going to have several conditions that fall on to the zoning administrator, which, which would be a person in my capacity. There are other options, and I'm glad you brought this up. There are other options that we can certainly interject here. One would be review and approval by the planning commission. One would be review and a recommendation by the planning commission and ultimate approval by the city council. Typically, some communities have zoning regulations, and we kind of touched on this a little bit earlier. But some zoning regulations require site plan approval for any non-residential project, apartments, commercial, industrial, what have you. Sometimes they limit those just to a commercial review, which is kind of the way I've been kind of directed to take a look at future amendments to the zoning regulations. For logistical purposes, the city of Wichita, Cedric County does not have a site plan review, but places such as Andover, Goddard, Derby, communities like that have a formal site plan review. So an example would be, we would have a zoning case for a commercial entity that would get approved, probably within the year, we would see another agenda item on our agenda called site plan review. And there we would have the architectural materials, the design, the site plan, the building, somebody was asking about building plans. That's all the information that would be part of a site plan review package. So again, like other conditions, we're building that process into this particular case. It may be such that we don't have that many zoning cases to require a site plan review, so we may just rely on the more sensitive zoning cases to, to have a protective overlay that would have that site plan review. But this may be one of those cases where, for, for a variety of reasons, you may not want to have a sole person responsible for the review and approval of the landscape plan, the building plan, the site plan, things of that nature. You may want to take that out of an individual's hands and put that in your own hands. That would be suggested. Perhaps the city council would also want to be a party to approval of site plan in this particular instance. Those would be as written. That would not be something that would be publicly, necessarily publicly declared. Clearly, in this circumstance, we would understand with Bear Hill Estates and certainly Saddlebrook's HOA would be invited to that table, but I think that i- if that's the direction, say, you would want to go with this particular condition or all the references in the protective overlay as it relates to approval by the zoning administrator, that would be something that we can dictate and kind of craft tonight for your formal recommendation to the city council. But that certainly runs the gamut from having no site plan to having a staff level review to having a planning commission review and ultimately maybe a governing body review. That's the full spectrum of options that we would have on those types of conditions.
Good. Should we revise it to include our committee, our commission to review it?
I have no objection to us, to us reviewing
Please, I guess we call a site plan review?
My
Is that the word?
All right, so we would rewrite these to reflect not staff level review, but the applicant shall supply X to the planning commission for review and approval prior to the issuance of building permits, instead of issuing it to the zoning administrator for review and approval prior to issuance of building permits.
Give us the option to allow, I think you touched on it a little bit, option to allow other people to examine it, maybe not in public, but like the HOA members?
So I think we want to get away from the idea where we're inviting people to have authority over an application. My suggestion, maybe to put a little finer point on it, so I think it would be very wise and perhaps in this circumstance, if the commission desires to have, the planning commission is the sole authority to review and approve those site plans and those landscape plans, those building elevations, what have you, whatever ultimately gets approved. With the, the fact that when the applicants bring that material for a site plan review, that the two HOAs are notified. And then they can become, just like they have been in this process, they would have a seat at the table for comment.
Okay.
I'd like to see that in there, I think that would be great.
I, I agree, and I have no problem. My only concern would be, would the developer be willing to wait month to month to month since we only meet every month? Are there, would there be circumstances that they'd need an answer that a staff member would be able to give them right away?
You always, you always have the ability to have a special meeting, and if the developer knows that in advance, that that's one of the conditions, then it's kind of up to them to, you know, to have that done in advance and know the schedule so that they're not depending on a quick turnaround for their building permit, they realize they have that review. So I, I think it's workable.
Okay. Well, I think it's workable, I just wanted to be sure that
Again, I, I think, I think that it's workable for the developer.
Yes.
We're giving them notice of this right now, and that's going to be known going forward, so when they make their plans and have their construction schedule set out and hire the people to do their landscaping plan and elevations, they can take that into consideration.
Okay.
And the review criteria is fairly well laid out in this protective overlay. So when we get into a situation where we're, the applicants going through their site plan and discussing their screening options, and they show berm and they show landscaping and they show deciduous and evergreen trees, we're not going to be modifying the elements of the protective overlay, we're simply ensuring the consistency and the
Meeting the parameters of the overlay.
Meeting the parameters of the protective overlay.
Right. On this particular situation, do we know when ground's going to be broken, if it is approved?
I do not have that information, but there again, Mike Richardson, agent for the applicant.
I just answered from here.
Yeah.
So I guess first, I, I like the idea of being as transparent as possible with, with Saddle Brook HOA. We share that.
Can you, oh, yeah, I can. Oh, we have people out here in the lobby.
No worries. All right.
I guess first, I, I like the idea of, of sharing plans as we, as we move forward, assuming approved with, with, with Saddle Brook. We've, we've met with them and communicated via email and even shared that we would, we would like to have a regular cadence even of, of discussion as we, as we move along. So a review of the site layout and landscaping is, I think, would be appropriate for that. As far as breaking ground, we, the current plan would be early in calendar 2021.
Okay.
So you referenced Chairman, Chairman Woman, you referenced months and months and months. I mean, I'm not sure how many months that is, but, but we have, I think, we, we have a little bit of time in front of us before we even plan to break ground or need building permits, certainly landscaping.
What was the date you said for breaking ground?
We would like, we would like to very early in 2021.
Okay.
So you'd have the blueprints and the land, the landscape architecture drawings?
We do not have the landscape architecture drawings. Our, our architectural engineer is, is here, another employee with Air Capital, who will be the person providing those blueprints.
Obviously, you'd have all that way before early 2021.
Pardon me?
It'd be hard, you'll have all that
Yeah, well, well, well before that, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, should we change this right now?
We certainly can. I think I counted three references in total
I know there's several.
To zoning administrator review, and my presumption is that we would want to change all of those over to the same process of planning commission review. So 9A has that, item 10 and item 14. So the landscaping, architectural character, and overall site plan would be the three areas for planning commission review and approval, as opposed to zoning administrator review and approval.
9A, 10, and what was the other one?
14.
Got it. Okay. That sounds good. That sounds good. Okay. Number 9B. A landscape buffer of a minimum of 40 feet in width shall be provided along the south and east property lines of the residential development of, to the northwest of the subject property. Said buffer shall include a berm and a minimum of eight feet in height and landscape planting calculated at one tree or two ornamental trees and five shrubs per 20 feet. Said buffer shall be a combination of deciduous and evergreen landscaping. The minimum planting size of all deciduous trees shall not, shall be no smaller than three-inch caliper and all evergreen trees shall be a minimum of six feet in height. A solid screening fence shall not be required.
Ma'am Chair, this is where I chime in. The third line, the said buffer includes a berm at minimum of eight feet in height. Should we putting, should we be putting a maximum height foot on there for this? And also is a eight feet, a, I would think more of 10-foot minimum would be appropriate. I don't know how much it's going to eliminate the view from these houses, but I would assume that eight foot isn't very tall and once planted and settling, it's going to lower than that.
All right. Russ?
Certainly. Chairman Lewis, I'd just say that typically we, screening is of course one of those more subjective elements, but traditionally when we see a landscape buffer, we would see berms anywhere from four to eight feet in height with plantings on top of that to create a, a, a visual screen, if you will. And oftentimes that is the, the height range because of the side slopes of the berm have to be such to where your base of that berm starts to get wide to the point of, you know, eating up usable property. So also, when we talk about solid screening, whether that's a concrete wall or a fence, we typically deal with six to eight feet in height as standard fencing heights. So eight foot, as, as far as my personal experience in such conditions, is at the upper end. I have seen cases where there is a 12-foot berm required, so I thought eight foot minimum was beyond what is typical, but yet
I was thinking 12, but then I thought that might be kind of too high for the neighborhood itself. I'd like to see it go to 10 anyway, on a minimum height. I assume establishing a maximum height probably isn't necessary, but in this case we may want to?
That certainly at your discretion.
I'd just like to pull the board on that.
Could we ask the applicant?
Certainly.
I think you had mentioned it last week, but I forgot. What's the height of the berm for your, in your plans? I'm thinking you said 20 feet, but I hope I don't
We'd intended to be 20 feet high in order to, to take those homes closest to, to the, the business out of, out of their line of sight. So if someone's standing on their main floor of their house, you know, viewing from 16 feet high in the air, their line of sight is up in a very, at some slight angle, 14 degrees or something like that, based on the distance, that as you go, as, as you look further out, the lighting and, and other visual pollution becomes, it becomes not visible, I guess. So that was the, that was why we were intending to go to 20 feet. If you, if you went with 10 feet, the folks that are closest to the property line would still have a clear shot of both the current highway view as well as our, the business and camper land and, and others.
Even with the trees, are you going to stick on top?
Pardon me, sorry?
Even with the trees that'll be put on top, that's going to add height?
Yeah, I mean, i- i- if, I, I think it would be, it would be adequate to say that 20 feet max with trees would still provide that visual, visual screening, you know, that we think would be good for the residents to, to have. So I, I think we're, we're flexible. I just wanted to give you the reason why we chose 20 feet as an ultimate height, whether it's 20 feet just of the earth screening or 20 feet combination earth and trees, vegetation, or I think we were fine, we, we think it would work either way.
Okay. Will that be including the trees, the 20 feet, or you said a combination?
Well, I'm, I'm saying we, it could be either from our perspective. If, if the commission feels that 20 feet, then having vegetation on top of that, whether it be trees plus other stuff, if that's too high, then, you know, we could say, we could construct it such that it's 20 feet in total. Now, getting it, as, as trees and things grow, it's going to be, that would be difficult to, to stay
Of course, you're getting the, the base width is going to be considerable with 20 feet also.
Absolutely. There's very specific
Be 60 feet base.
Specific criteria, so you don't have
Right.
Very steep sides and erosion and
Well, you're going to
Other things.
Three to one in the rough.
As, as it sits today, is it not wide enough for the height that is, obviously? If you've been there and seen it, it's just a, it's just where we're, dirt is being stored. That's not the actual
Right.
Screening location or shape.
Will that screening be along the east edge and the south edge?
Yes, sir, the, the south edge, the entire south edge from, from where the homes begin to Broadway and also continuing along the east edge up to the end of the housing development.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I must admit, I thought that was the berm, but it's not. That's interesting. Okay.
It's roughly that area, but
Right.
But that shape is not sufficient for berm.
Okay.
And just for clarification, I think we, we need to separate those out. We need, the intention of that condition, and my suggestion would be to maintain whatever height, whether that's eight feet, whether that's 10 feet, 12 feet, 20 feet, is the physical height of the berm, not any improvements on that berm.
Right, right. So
Will trees hold up in the winter or summer with 40 or 50 mile an hour winds coming across the open field? Already sitting up like a flagpole?
And that's one of the reasons that we're requiring them to provide a, an official landscape plan developed by a landscape architect.
Good.
Well, I don't know about you, but I, I think going to a minimum of 12 feet wouldn't be an issue then if that's the case as presented from the applicant.
So you want a, a berm minimum of 12 feet and then vegetation on top of that, Chris? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, and landscaping and plantings on top of the 12-foot Correct. And landscaping and plantings on top of the twelve-foot, all right, minimum.
Anybody else have an opinion? Is that all right with you all?
Yes.
All right.
I guess.
Can we change that then, please, to berm?
I'll allow it, just this one time. No. That's fine. No. Uh, we can modify all these. We can modify, we can modify all these conditions, so yes.
Could be changed during the site plan review?
No.
If we see the drawing and say, oh my God, it looks like a big...
No, and that's why, you know, there's the idea, well, if, if Mr. Richardson's up here advocating for the project and he keeps consistently saying twenty feet, a twenty-foot berm, uh, that's all well and good. We can certainly take him at his word and enshrine that promise, uh, in the protective overlay. Uh, what we're trying to do is to provide just a minimum, uh, cause again, uh, this is a berm and landscape buffer that is extending well outside the boundaries of the particular subject property, the application area, uh, providing a greater, as it relates to landscape buffering, uh, a greater screening and buffering between Saddle Brook and the commercial element of Saddle Brook Second Edition, uh, beyond the scope of this particular project. So, does eight, ten, or twelve feet account for some noise abatement, uh, visual abatement, physical separation? Yes, it does. It provides for, for, for all of those things to, to whatever degree. You know, really beyond that, uh, you know, I just don't see any need for really any other type of modification for that. But this is a protective overlay, so this is going to be, once, uh, let's say, uh, the city council were to, um, approve this, subject to a protective overlay, uh, one of those things just can't be modified. Once they're enshrined in a protective overlay. So we get to the site plan review, say in six months and four months, however long it would maybe, um... And we all may be sitting around looking at each other thinking a ten-foot berm would be perfect. We still have to abide by that twelve, twelve-foot, uh, minimum. So, so that's, it's somewhat immovable. The site plan review isn't to modify and lessen the restrictions. If anything, it's simply a review to make sure that the promises made during this phase is enacted and gets built. Uh, so from that standpoint, whatever, we want to do the work here now and the city council wants to review this work when they get the case, uh, in a few weeks. Uh, but, but no, uh, the site plan review process would not, uh, or should not be modifying any of the provisions of the protective overlay lesser than what, uh, the conditions ask for. They can always, you know, I mean, if, if Mike comes here and agrees that, you know, we want to do twenty-four-foot berms, then, and, and it works, prove the site plan, but we can't go lower than the standards set forth in the protective overlay.
So... Is that all right? Everybody? Twelve-foot berm? Twelve-foot dirt with trees or vegetation on top?
Seems like a lot of dirt to me.
A lot of dirt. Lot less than twenty feet.
Yeah, well, twelve-foot, I'd make, make it a thirty-six inch or thirty, thirty-six foot.
Base.
Base, at least. I don't, I don't know what, uh, limits are on going up and down a... Forty-five degrees would be pretty severe. I think it'd have to be less than that.
It all factors in if you're going to mow the side slopes. You're looking at about a four to one, three to one.
Yeah.
But, you know, you could, you may be able to get away with a steeper berm face if, if it's just planted in native grass and kept natural, I guess, but those are all factors that, uh, our landscape architect will account for.
There's no mention of grass in item B, but is that, or is it built into one of the words there? Just talks about trees and, uh, one of, uh, trees and bushes, shrubs.
I think that's a great catch. I think that's something that we can certainly add, that, that all berm shall be vegetated as to prevent erosion. It would be a requirement in other areas, but I think it, again, like, like with, like what we did with parking, where we added the specific nature of that parking to be paved surface, eliminates the allowance of the zoning administrator to waive that requirement, which is why it's, uh, in number seven. So along those same lines, although it may be a redundancy, we can certainly add that all, uh, side slopes of the berm shall be kept in a vegetative state for, or shall be planted with native grasses to prevent erosion.
I particularly like the native grass around the, the, uh, called Fox Ridge, I believe, and, um, Estancia. Areas on, in West Wichita, looks very nice. All right. Anything more on nine B? All right. Nine C. Street trees along Eighty-Fifth Street North and the proposed Hartman Drive shall be planted within a ten-foot landscape buffer. The number of required trees shall be calculated at one tree per thirty lineal feet of frontages.
Should we put a minimum planting size like was done in item B? Three-inch caliper, minimum six feet in height?
Ag- again, that's certainly within your discretion to, to include a caliper size at planting.
I would want to see twenty-one twigs.
What do you want?
Incorporate, uh, the diameter and height, numerical values that are on item B. There's a three-inch caliper for diameter and then a six-inch, uh, six-foot height.
All right.
Just to be consistent.
All right. You want to put that in?
Yes.
All right.
I think we should.
Yes.
Okay. And six foot. Okay. Sounds good. Anything else? On nine C? Okay. Nine D. Trash recept- receptacles, rooftop mechanical equipment, loading docks, outdoor storage and loading areas shall be appropriately screened to reasonably hide them from ground view. Screening shall be constructed of materials similar to the buildings within the subject property. Anything?
Anybody? Ma'am Chair?
Yes?
I want to go back to what the applicant has said, Mr. Richardson, about, Mr. Richardson, right? Thank you. About landscaping fence and planting the buffer as presented, um, by him, uh, with the shrubs and everything around the trucking area. I don't know if that needs to be maybe addressed as another line item in here. We'd have an E and then an F, uh, with the next one. Um, but I, I'd like to see something along that lines in here since he says they're going to include that. I'd like to see the landscape and plant buffer walls, um, throughout the, uh, to dampen the noise from the trucking area as they've suggested that they're going to do, put in our protective overlay. Can we do that?
Can we? Certainly. Uh, I think maybe it would just be another item in that list.
That's what I was thinking. We would just add an item.
On the first sentence of D, maybe?
Yeah, I was thinking six E or, and then have an F or whatever you, whatever we need to do there, or nine E, sorry.
We certainly can. So the intent of D is again to have a more cohesive design element, so if you're using split-faced block on the building, we want to see split-faced block on the screening wall, uh, around the dumpsters, for example. Uh, if they are proposing, uh, an alternative material for this overnight truck parking fencing, screening, noise abatement or whatever, we may want, that's, that would be different than the building materials.
Correct.
And it probably would be, in my estimation, and Mike can certainly hop up and answer that. But we may want to create an item F under that, a nine F, that would in fact, uh, describe and, and detail the, the truck parking area screening.
That's what I was assuming we would need to do, and, and I'd like to, to do that either here and make this E and, and change E to F, or we'll go ahead and make that F and skip, skip it for now and go to E and then add F, if that's okay with the board.
Just make it DF. We already have E. And we're all under, it's under lan- screening and landscaping anyway.
Right.
So... Okay.
Uh, I have a question on D.
You have a question on what, Michael?
On D, on the trash receptacles. Are there already, uh, health code requirements for odor and rodent impedance around the trash receptacles? I know we're gonna cover them up to hide them, but close them?
That would fall under most likely something in the municipal code, dealing with health, health, safety standards, property, uh, standards.
Okay.
Um, it would, similar to keeping trash and refuse in your front yard or, uh, your grass getting overgrown, things of that nature, so...
Thank you.
Anything else on nine D? All right. Nine E. Failure to properly maintain the required screening or landscaping shall be considered a violation of the, of the protective overlay after a joint determination by the zoning administrator and the code enforcement officer. That'd be the City of Park City Code Enforcement Officer. Anything on that? Okay, then nine F, the new one we've added. Want to describe the truck parking screening or screening around, or you want to use the word near truck parking? The overnight parking is what you're talking about?
Yes, the overnight truck parking area would require, uh, uh, fencing, landscaping fencing with a plant buffer at a minimum height. What were you thinking, ten, twelve feet, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, we... We ha- we have not determined the, what we recommend for an overall height of, of the combination. It's, it's not intended to be the landscaping on, on, you know, above the, above the wall or the fence. Um, and, and part of the reason the fence would be there, uh, is, will, would be, uh, to help secure the lot as well.
Well, I think eight feet would probably be fine there because most truck engines aren't gonna sit above that anyway.
Say it again?
So I, I, I think eight feet on that fencing would probably be fine to enclose the truck parking area to give it a buffer.
Okay.
Added to the overall landscape plan presented by the architect at the point in time they're ready to do that.
You say not less, or you said a minimum, they said a minimum of eight feet or a minimum of twelve, and then do you want to put a minimum of eight on this one?
Minimum of eight feet on the fencing for the truck lot with a plant buffer. And have this presented in the landscape plan.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody want to add to that or change it or... Okay, that's good. Okay. Number ten. All buildings located within the subject property shall share uniform architectural character, color, texture, and the same predominant, predominant exterior building material as determined by the Park City Planning Commission. Right? Can I say that instead of zoning administrator? All right. Building walls and roofs must be predominantly earth-toned colors with vivid colors limited to incidental accent and must employ a mix of materials such as architectural block, brick and/or stone that will break up the surface of each of the buildings in the subject property. Architectural metal as an exterior material shall be limited to incidental accent, not to exceed twenty percent of any building elevation. Extensive use of backlit canopies and neon or fluorescent tube lighting on buildings is not permitted. Buddy?
No. What would extensive use be?
Oh, you don't want a bunch of neon all over the place. It can't have moving, so it can't be moving or flashing, but you...
And it's also limited to two sides of the building.
Yes.
It says extensive use. What defines extensive?
Well... Russ, do you have a percentage?
I'm thinking of one.
I know. I don't know.
I mean, it...
Is there something typical that's usually been used in areas?
This is, this is the, the Hollywood video condition of yesteryear in my experience of where their building was a neon building. I mean, that thing was full of neon tubing. So, uh, we, we could try to ascribe a percentage of it. I think if they would have, um, some sort of window display sign for, for beverages that they would have for sale inside the convenience store element of that, and that happens to be a neon lit sign, do we want to exclude those types of window signs? Uh, this primarily goes to having, uh, you know, a neon ribbon around the, the upper, uh, s- upper build, exterior building wall of some sort. If, um, if we want to say use of backlit cana- uh, uh, use of neon or fluorescent tube lighting on building permitted and just leave it at that, that would be...
Do you want to leave off the word extensive?
Well, I...
I know.
Engineer, I deal with numbers.
Fifteen percent. Sounds good.
Well, I was thinking tw- twenty percent. Yeah, fifteen, twenty percent.
I was thinking fifteen percent. No.
I mean, we're, we're talking about most, most commercial, and here's the, here's the rub, here's the difficulty. Most commercial, uh, construction would have some side of canopy underlighting. And I don't think too many people care whether or not the front entry, entrance to this is, is lit. What we're trying to, uh, regulate against is more of a, a, an overuse as a theme, as a design element. Uh, if you're looking for something retro fifties, as an example, uh, I think we want to avoid having some sort of stainless steel facade with, uh, embellished with extensive, uh, neon tubing, and that would be neon fluorescent tubing, uh, around a large percentage of each building elevation. So maybe we don't care what the extensive means, and maybe we prohibit that type of element on all and north-facing building elevations, as an example.
Okay. I guess we'll stick with the extensive.
Did you want to put a percentage, Michael?
I don't know what percentage would create problems for the, uh, design of the facility.
I know. I don't, we don't want it to look like Las Vegas or something, but we don't want to say prohibit him from having a...
A fluorescent light.
Well, a Bud Light sign in the window, you know, or...
Well, it says fluorescent and neon. There's a lot of things that are fluorescent, too.
Well, perhaps extensive is acceptable for now.
Well, we would have the ability to dictate and define what extent review process. I, I hate to punt on third down on that, but I think that's one of, that this type of discussion, not this one necessarily specifically, but this falls into a category of items that we're concerned about that make a site plan review process necessary.
Okay.
Or desired, I should say.
Okay.
Okay, so leave it as it is now, and then we'll.
Review during the site plan review.
With a review, okay. Anybody else? Okay. Number eleven. Utility, utilities shall be installed underground within the subject property. I think we have a problem with that. Number twelve, approval of the zone change due upon the replating of the subject property. Okay, number thirteen, guarantees for specific street improvements.
An extension wasn't asked, so I didn't answer.
So do we need to change?
The vote, I, Renee, is an extension, and, and that goes with the majority, so it would be seven oh votes.
For the seventeen, do you want to change the minutes? I wondered if she wa- if Debbie wanted to change the minutes.
It should be a set, according to your bylaws, not voting is an abstention.
Right.
And according to your bylaws, an abstention is a vote that goes with the majority.
With the majority.
In this case, the majority was six oh, so that abstention goes with the majority, it's a seven oh vote.
So it's a seven oh, okay. I read that in the bylaws today. Okay, okay, thank you. All right. We have the case number Z twenty twenty dash oh three before us. The recommendation is for city council approval or disapproval. We can't, we can't vote to approve. We recommend city council approve or disapprove. So I would entertain a motion. We've gone through the seventeen findings, and we've gone through the protective overlay, which is quite extensive.
And I would suggest, just like Commissioner Smith, if someone, if there is a motion to recommend approval of the request, and somebody is going to vote against that motion or vote, in essence, to, to recommend denial of the application, I would suggest that Commissioner do as Mr., as Commissioner Smith did, and provide the, the validation for, for their vote. Otherwise, you can.